We've reconvened the planning commission from the August 23 meeting. The invocation will be led by Joyce, and the pledge will be led by Johnny. Please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this glorious day. Thank you for the folks who gathered here tonight. Father God, guide us as we make decisions regarding Buckingham County and the future of Buckingham County. May we work in unison, work together, and work for the best of our county. Guide us safely home. Bless those that are not able to come. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Our pledge is these is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Establishment of quorum. We have five of eight, so we do have a quorum. Items of business for the planning commission. Solar farms. I would like to clarify a couple things before we start the program per se. The last time y'all were here, you made the comment, the way I heard it anyway, that all construction traffic would be used on Payne Pond Road. Is that correct?
Would you like to come up with this?
Yes, please.
Sure. So, in our application, we included a transportation statement. And then within that transportation statement, we articulate the roads that are going to be used during construction and then also in operations and maintenance. We see that as two separate phases. And there's a map that sort of articulates those roads as well. It shows them. So, to your point, as far as roads used specifically during construction, it's going to be primarily Bridgeport Road and then Payne Pond Road, that road that divides basically the center of the project, which are going to be the two primary roads for construction. And then Payne Pond Road continues north beyond our project area.
Aye.
But we're committed to not using Payne Pond Road or Payne Road further north where our property line basically ends. So, it would primarily be just Bridgeport Road and Payne Pond Road during, in that section where it joins our property line.
Then y'all will be building a few buildings with substations or whatever they are down closer to the river?
Yes, to the northeast portion of the project site, we would propose three things. There would be a collection station, a substation, and then probably just a container.
Okay.
For landscaping.
But they will be constructed from Payne Pond Road as well, right?
That would be accessed from Payne Pond Road, yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Open it up.
Do you foresee your traffic primarily coming from Route 20 or Route 15, or do you feel like this will probably be a combination of both? So, you won't have that truck traffic coming in off these two main quarters?
Correct.
On Bridgeport Road?
It would be a combination of both of those primary roads, yeah. But it would avoid taking Payne Pond Road from where, from that 20 entrance, and we would come down into Bridgeport Road and then come up from the bottom of the road.
You've got a low weight bridge coming from 20 on that too.
Right.
Okay, why don't you just sit down right there for just a second?
Sure, no problem.
I'd like to turn to the commission. Let's talk about a buffer. What do we want in a buffer? Talk amongst ourselves.
In terms of setback or vegetation or both?
Well, I think 50 foot's a good setback.
I looked, tried to look at a few other ordinances in Virginia, I think Halifax, it's like they have adopted like 75 feet, so we're more than what we have discussed.
Okay, give me some more thinking about the buffer itself. What do we want? We want it so you cannot see through it, is that correct?
Is there a buffer on 60? I'm new to this. Is there a buffer on 60?
That's why we go make sure there's a buffer on this. That's why you can never go a project from now on.
That's, okay, that's my question, because I looked at it coming in and going out.
And you didn't see one, did you?
Didn't see one. I know what a buffer is.
There was supposed to be two roads there, but, and they actually tore down an awful lot of vegetation that was along the front of that property between the solar panels and 60. But, that's water over the dam.
Right.
At this point in time, I personally talked to warehouser today, and I think they've got it pretty much understood now that they can, in fact, buy the timber that's in that 50-foot standing at this point. Now, I assume that's what you'll do, but if not, we will have to work on establishing a buffer that cannot be seen through during the first five years while a buffer is growing. So, let's talk about that. What are we, what are some thoughts on how do we accomplish that one?
Well, in the case of the warehouse track, as well as the NCT track down on 20, they got plantations established already. So, I guess the question is, what is the height you want and the density of the trees? As far as NCT, the one on 20, that pine is established enough, it's about, I'm just looking at it, I'd say 12, 13 years old. It's higher than pine, so that's pretty much outside.
Yeah.
As where's the warehouse track, I did go and had opportunity to come through there and look at some of that, and they've got the same situation in some of their areas.
Right.
They've got established plant base that's sizable enough that you're not going to be able to see over it, nor are you going to be able to see through it. Now, another area is it's younger because of the charms and reforests. So, I guess my question is, if you go with the 50, or if you go with the 70, or something in between, whatever, do you want to start with a height and a density that would probably help you a little bit? Most panels, can someone speak to that? 10 feet at most, height of panels?
Yeah, at the merge, 16 feet.
16 feet.
Well, that's another question. Do we want to stipulate how high they can be? I don't know if you guys looked at some of the other ordinances, but I chose Halifax just because they were the gold rush pretty much of solar farm here.
Right.
But they have 20-foot maximum height of their panels at the lowest grade, so I would think that 15-foot vegetation, you know, would give you good enough.
You know, I don't think that we need to worry about... What am I trying to say here? I think that there's ways of achieving this without making somebody go out and spend a million dollars landscaping.
I agree.
I think we can, the way I understand it, when I personally rode the thing, I saw a few areas that needed attention, and they were along... Is it Taggart's? No, that's not the name. What's the name of the road that this one's on?
Bridgewater.
Bridgewater. There was a part of Bridgewater that had been pretty much cut clear, and all of Payne Creek Road had been cut clear on the right-hand side. So, those are the two areas that I know need attention. And my thinking was, we're going to take a 50-foot buffer, so let's just take the 10 feet closest to the road and skip it and talk about the next 40 feet. These were planted by warehouser already, so it's, what are they, 10 feet of barge out at 10-foot centers, 8-foot park?
Usually 8 by 10.
8 by 10, so we've got 80 square feet. Each 80-square-foot block should be supplemented with three or four additional pine tree seedlings of two or three years old to match those kind that are in there now. Then, we jump up to the front 10 feet, and that's going to be an annual process until the buffer is tall enough that we can't see over it, which should take five, six years, Johnny?
Probably about five, six.
So, we're talking about an annual process for maybe five years on 10 feet of land, bordering every place that's been cut clean. And what are you planting at 10 feet? I don't care, long as it's something tall, it grows quick. Sorghum, for example. And I'm not saying you got to plant sorghum. I'm just saying, I know that works, and I know if you take a 10-foot swath of sorghum, you're not going to see anything through it. It's relatively cheap, and it's not something that requires a lot of attention. And you could plant corn there, but corn is going to quickly come apart once the winter hits, and you're going to see through it. So, I'm not sure corn does the job. But, there's something that you can get that'll accomplish the goal that we have of not making people look at this thing for five years before maybe they get a break. Anybody else got any thoughts on this thing? Have we said enough on buffers? You got any better ideas? Anybody? And which subject, when you come back up here next time, if you've got a better idea, you know, I'm not telling you you got to do that. I'm just trying to think of some ways that we can accomplish our goal, which should keep our citizens from having to look at these things for five years minimum.
Sure, I understand.
Okay. Now, Nicky, I can turn it over to you, whatever it is you want to do here.
Mr. Chairman, based upon last week's meeting and the need for our work session, I took the three things that were discussed where most questions were raised, and that was in relation to the consideration of the size of a solar farm, whether it be the acreage or the megawatt. Two, the economic benefits to the county, I know there were lots of questions surrounding that. And then, of course, exactly what you're discussing now, special use permit conditions. This is where the questions in regard to your buffers, whether it's setback or vegetation, they'd be addressed. If there's anything that you want to add, change, delete, modify, conditions 10, 11, and 12 deal specifically with what you were just discussing. Ashley, number 23, actually addresses the maximum height of the panel, so it is there. And yes, Halifax does offer information to us. So, as we, or as you move forward and determine better ways to address this project, we'll dive deep into those conditions. But, I'll lay this here as a groundwork for tonight, so what questions do you have in regard to that or to those three items? Or did I miss anything?
Well, let's start with the first, consideration of size and acreage of the solar farms. I think what you're getting at here is, do we want a whole bunch of little ones, or do we want a few big ones? Or do we want a few big ones and a few small ones? Or what exactly are we looking for? What's our goal?
Just to offer what's existing in the county right now. As you know, Buckingham Solar One is a 19.8 megawatt. That's the first one that's probably referred to as the Firestone Solar Project and its inception on Route 60. That is currently operating. The second 20-megawatt solar farm is Buckingham Two Solar. That's also located on Route 60 in the same area. That's under construction now. So, you can see those are 20-megawatt, they're side by side because of their location to transmission lines. And we also have approved Black Bear Solar, which is a 1.6-megawatt, a smaller solar farm last summer off of Bell Branch Road. Current projects are, of course, Riverstone Solar, which you've heard a presentation from last week, and Jimmy Merrick is here to contribute to answer any questions that are posed. And, of course, this is a proposed 149.5-megawatt solar farm located on Bridgeport. And, we also have before us two community solar projects, and those were IPS Solar. Both were 2 megawatts, one located on Gravel Hill Road and the other on Route 20. In the next four to six, possibly eight months, you will probably be faced with other applications that will be much larger than 2 megawatt, possibly not the size of Riverstone Solar, but very large in and of itself. So, it gives way to great thought in regard to what you addressed last week, and that would be the size of these solar farms. And you must remember that where they're located is where the transmission line exists. So, you will see projects of this nature. The desirability of the project's size, just as Chairman Bo mentioned just a few minutes ago, do you want to see many smaller sites or a few larger sites? And remember, based upon the size, that's where the positive economic benefit to the county would lie.
Did you say that the size would benefit more from, than larger than small?
Yes, a larger solar farm would provide more economic benefit to the county. If you were to look at this in multiple buckets for the county, there are ways for a stream of revenue to come in. The larger the megawatt of the solar farm, there's legislation for revenue sharing ordinance, which has not been adopted here in Buckingham, but that would provide $1,400 per megawatt, which is also introduced in Riverstone's application, for a total of approximately $14 million over the lifespan of the farm, which is 40 years. So, that would be the revenue stream from a revenue share ordinance. There's also a citing agreement in which negotiations can be made for economic impacts. And then, of course, the tax base for the land within the solar compound, where it may be valued at $1,000 to $2,000 an acre in this agricultural determination. Once it moves forward with a solar farm and the works be approved, your tax value would increase significantly, $10,000 to $12,000, $14,000, whatever that determination is made at that time. So, there are real economic benefits to a solar farm of this size. Under 2 megawatt at this time, there's no revenue share available, no citing agreement, and 1,400 times two, $2,800 in comparison.
I'm just not that up on this large, this large of a solar farm. I know Buckingham is looking at different solar farms, and we're right in the beginning of it, and we don't know a lot about it. You don't know how to consider what's going to happen, what, how we're going to have to manage it, or how they will manage it. I just don't know what to expect. Maybe a smaller one would be easier to, a smaller, smaller one would be easier to manage, and we could have a handle on it. But this is a big one.
What limited information I was gathering, the expense that we're called to acquire that'd be larger is the substation, if I'm correct on that, right? For the refer, I'm thinking, some of the ones I read, it's up to $10 million for the substation to be constructed. So, that's why you need more acreage to justify the expense. That's also what I was thinking, indicated, that's where the benefit comes for the county with the revenue. But, if you start going too small, then you don't, apparently there's a breaking point where you've got to stay up a certain amount of acreage to justify the expense. If you drop below that, then you got to drop down to the small solar farms that can hook onto the existing land, you don't, doesn't require a substation. But, it doesn't produce electricity generation, doesn't generate enough, and then, of course, you don't have the economic benefit for the county.
You probably also got to put three phases in it there, don't you?
Smaller farms can operate off of three phases.
Are they?
The smaller solar projects would be able to operate off of three phases now.
Three phases. Yeah, but what I'm saying is, you probably got to put that in addition to the substation, don't you?
Well, for the, I don't think so on the main transitional lines, because these larger in all the other counties, and I'm sure that's what they're looking at in Buckingham, is a large transmission line, where the substation they can direct into.
Okay.
So, that's sort of the position or the history where we're at right now, that's lack of better way to describe it. You either got to be small or large, which is not, because of the logistics, doesn't
I only got another question. How will this impact their land and the things on demand, you know, of people around? You know, I know a lot of people that live in this area. How is this going to affect the environment, it being so huge, so large? Just things in the back of my mind, that, how can we, how can we make this suitable for people living around there? I think getting this thing to where they're going to have to look at it is going to be a good first step.
That's true.
Then it's going to make it go away, but you at least not going to have to look at it every day.
The applicant has included property valuation reports. I'm not sure if you've been able to get to those parts yet. As mentioned, since this is the project of Apex, if there are specific questions related to those buffers or the property values or the impact on wildlife, Jimmy Merrick is available to answer those as those studies have been conducted, as indicated in his
Does anybody else have any thoughts on how we can make it more livable for the people in the area? Let's try it that way.
Chairman, I thought in his presentation, he said that they would, that the waterways and the animal travel ways, all of that was going to be maintained, and that the vegetation, so that the soil would not be lost, and so that, and not a huge impact, so it would be established that it would not be a huge impact to the wildlife.
Aye.
And that the waterways would not be affected, so you wouldn't be affecting the water or the hunters in the area?
Other than the land being taken out?
Other than the land being taken out. But, still with the, and if I'm looking at, this picture that I'm looking at, it's like we're going to establish, make sure we have the animal trans, the travel ways with it, how the animals travel through the areas, that would not be disruptive. Although, if you fence this puppy, I don't know how, you're going to, the animals are just going to leap all the way, keep going, you know?
Well, no. The areas, they use the term perimeter fence, and that's not a good term. It's a perimeter fence per parcel, per collection of solar panels. And then, let's say it's right here on this hilltop, and then land falls off the end of the creek, comes back up into the wildlife corridor.
Right.
To another. Okay, that will be fenced, this will be fenced.
But not the whole area.
Exactly.
Okay.
Am I right?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. Now, is this what you were showing as, with regard to preserving the layout and the animal pathways?
Correct. That's a, that's a map indicating wildlife corridors. So, that's areas where we're proposing leaving contiguous paths of natural vegetation where wildlife would be able to travel through the project once it's constructed.
And, if I might interrupt you just a minute, in its narrower portions, that's still quite a wide area, isn't it?
It's significant. It's a significant area, yes.
Um, do that, there, I'm just guessing, on this scale, it's probably two or three hundred feet wide?
Yeah, it, it's hundreds of acres, I think, in the total wildlife coverage.
Okay. Do you see a scale on that?
Right over here, right down here.
Okay, well. I was looking feet, but these are miles. I mean, okay.
Yeah, if you're looking at this.
This is a mile and a quarter. Am I reading that right, my glasses?
Oh.
What does that say?
No, that's, that's point, no, that's point one-two-five.
Okay, this is a quarter of a mile.
That is a...
Quarter of a mile.
A tenth, four tenths.
Well, that's...
Four tenths kilometers.
Kilometers.
This is a quarter mile, you're right there.
Quarter mile. Okay, so...
That's a quarter mile.
That's at least an eighth of a mile, would you agree?
Yes.
Eighth of a mile wide, which would be...
Okay.
Six hundred and some feet.
Correct. Four miles, three, thirteen hundred and twenty-two.
So, the point is, that these are not just twenty-five, fifty-foot on either side of the creek. These are actual areas, maybe because of topography, maybe because of good planning, I don't know, but they're considerably wider. Now, some of them, I mean, you, when you go from there to here, that's a half a mile wide.
Yes.
On some of these, so. So that, pretty much, I think, answers that question, done it yours?
No, the, the light green are the corridors.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The light green are the corridors, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
All right, that's what I'm looking at. No, these are the pathways.
Right, right.
Okay, though, so this is relatively wide, this is relatively narrow. See, these are narrow cores.
Right.
And so all of this, I'm assuming, would be the panels.
Well, yes and no.
Okay.
Let's just take this, it's that wide, okay? It's still... That much of, what's that, twenty, eighth of a mile, sixteenth of a mile wide?
Eighth of a mile, it's still wide, it's still...
It's still a...
Yes.
A nice wide area. It's not just the twenty-five foot either side of a creek that's required by forestry.
If the ante was four a mile, it's, the scale of one inch equals thirteen twenty, one down three on twenty feet on the ground, so if you got four tenths of an inch, you just multiply it times thirteen twenty, to be five hundred and something. Is the way to simplify.
Yeah.
Also, you, also in your narrative, you said you followed the, which is on the sound, you followed the actual terrain, correct? You're correct. When it became too steep, you backed off, so that's one reason, you see some water areas.
Right.
Steepness, because you go back and forth, there's no...
What was your cutoff slope?
Generally greater than fifteen percent, we won't construct that, or we would have to improve it, to make it constructional, but... As, as a rule of thumb, we can, we can construct pretty easily up to fifteen percent, so beyond that...
You don't try?
Yeah. And, and Joyce, to the point of wetlands, we delineated all the existing wetlands throughout the entire project area, so it's the, the existing streams, and then also the wetland areas. And outside of this process, there's federal regulation where it will require enough to, enough to impact those wetlands, and we would actually be held to a much higher standard than what's typically understood for forestry operations, because we're not protected under the civic culture exemption that most foresters would operate on here, and so, if you're a forester, you can, you take fifty feet off the stream's center line, and then, and then you can clear twenty-five feet of that, as long as you maintain fifty percent of canopy. If they go against delineated wetlands, basically, they just have to go to the stream's center. We're typically back hundreds of feet beyond that, even, even further, wherever you have streams or wetlands, and that's indicated on our site plan, all the delineated wetlands and everything like that. And so, as a result of the change in land use, that civic culture exemption no longer applies, and we have to, we have to cooperate with the area and quarter engineers, and so we're just, we're just, I say that just to say that we're held to sort of a higher standard, so we'll be set back even more so than what the county may be used to, from a wetland perspective, and we want to impact the existing wetlands to the extent that we can. In some instances, we may require a stream crossing or a road, but for the, for the most part, those, those wetlands and streams will be preserved.
Yeah, I'd like to ask you another question. On this, on this, for the access here, down on the other side, I guess that would be the west side?
Yeah.
What will that consist of? Would you need a right-of-way from the people from there to go there through the land?
Yeah, so there's a, there's an existing, they're existing roads through there, well-run lane, Georgia Creek Road, and, and Warehouse actually has easements already in place, so when they log that, that part of the property, they, they come out, they use both of those roads with their logging trucks, and, and aggregate the things that they need to pick up their operations, so there would be no additional easements or anything that would be required. That would probably be a different story if we were proposing to use them for construction, but we're not. We're proposing to only use those western roads for operations and maintenance, and that's just one to two pickup trucks a week, so it would be very minimal, it would actually probably, it would be a reduction of heavy traffic, because Warehouse would no longer be using it with its logging trucks, it would just be some pickup trucks in lieu of those. But then, to your point, no, no, the right-of-way would not have to be expanded, no additional easements would be necessary, there are just the system roads that we utilize.
Okay, if State Road six seventy-two is Bridgeport Road, am I right?
Six fifty-two.
Six fifty-two.
No, no, I'm, I'm talking, Hummingbird Lane, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
That runs out down, and it does not join through, I know it turns into a private, it's private land, it goes into a cul-de-sac, and then it's, it's dead, like that, the state doesn't maintain that anymore. You'd have to get some type of right-of-way a half a mile through there to get to there.
Could you point to me where you're...
Unless I'm wrong, right here.
Yeah.
It's not a highway or road through there, it's private land.
So right, right here, this is, that's the, that's basically the end of the state maintained road, and then it turns into Warehouse Control, so Warehouse...
It's a private road all the way back here, all through here.
Correct, yeah, you, you access this from twenty, and you...
That's Georgia, that's coming from Georgia Creek Road.
Correct, and you can drive all the way, you can pass these houses, and then it's a sort of end state maintenance right there.
On both sides, but you got a half a mile, or maybe more than that, in between there, but you don't have a, you don't have a road to go through there, I know that.
It stops right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, and then there's another road, Georgia Creek Road, that stops right here, right? You have this that comes up, that might be Hummingbird.
I would show it better on this.
I don't know the one, Georgia Creek Road.
Yeah. So, in these instances, both of these roads stop right at the exterior of our, of our property line, and then it's all private property inside of that.
The other here is, where you'd have to access is private property, off of you that you have to get, if you got, if you don't put a road through there, that's not a state maintained road, it's all nothing, it's nothing through here.
Correct, we would, we would construct our own internal access road to the project.
But you'd have to get a right-of-way, right, in some way.
We, we, we have the rights for this property, inside this lot, we have property rights.
Okay.
We signed a lease with Warehouse Company, and then Warehouse or landowner, Warehouse Company, we have a lease with them, so we're essentially renting the property for the, you know, the duration of the project, and we would be able, just like if you're a hunter and you lease the property to hunt on it, similar to that, but we're, we're leasing it from Warehouse until the solar project ends, and as a result of that lease, we have the ability to construct roads, solar panels, screening, substations, et cetera, wherever is essentially necessary for the construction and operation of the solar project. We have, we have rights with the landowner to do that.
I think you may have a little opposition when you go through that, I mean Warehouse might have a right-of-way, but I think you may have a problem with, with the landowners through there. You might want to investigate that a little bit more.
Sure, yeah, and, and that's, that's part of the reason, and we, I talked about this a little bit last Monday, but that's part of the reason why we're committing to not utilizing those roads during construction.
Why?
So, that's a commitment that we made in our, in our application, and it's an additional expense of the project, but we're happy to make that to keep the, keep the decent neighborhood in that, in that city as far as it's concerned.
Steve, you may want to look at the three-point-six easements and encumbrances, because it shows it a little bit easier to read, let's say about seven sixty-two and Hummingbird Road where it comes to an end.
You don't have another packet to use it?
I do.
I don't have one, I don't have one.
I have a few in the back as well.
So that, enjoy.
Is this it?
That's an, that's an alternative one, but that's also, that's also a good, so the red, the red shows where we're not going to utilize those roads for construction. So the, the red, red that's on there are prohibited from construction and traffic. So that gives you an indication of where the...
That's what I'm looking at.
These are near the back, oh, that's, that's a difference.
Poor neck up front, you wish.
This one, this one's near the back.
It's right there.
Where is, but that's not one.
They'll use this access, they're gonna make that accessible.
I'm gonna switch gears on it for a minute. Could Warehouse provide you with an updated self-culturally app of the property, show on first plating? Most timber groups have that, it would be beneficial for us, it's, what do we require for the puffers, if we knew what the ages of the plant takes in order, that we're established?
Yes, I can request that from Warehouse.
Okay, great. That'd be nice if you could get, that'd be very helpful if you could get that from New York.
Yeah, I found it.
So it is just one, it's a small stretch of road in there, that, that you want to evolve. The little box that just threw me off, I thought that was gonna be an access, but it won't be an access. The small box, the red box.
So we're talking about the same thing.
This red box.
It is, yeah, it's property we don't own actually. That little, that small red box is just outside.
I thought it was gonna be an access, you know, into the property.
I see.
Okay, thank you. Clear it up. Okay.
I'll jump back to the question we're talking about, if we prefer the big ones or the small ones, and I know this one's probably outside our comfort zone, it's like six times bigger than each of the ones on twenty, but fiscally, if you guys have all did the cleaning chime act, I know Jim's probably more familiar with it than any of us, but through 2035, this is kind of the future, and they promised big things for renewables, so while this might be the first one, I don't think it's gonna be your last, as Nikki maybe indicated, so I think we need to take some time to get our ordinances, and our own comfort level up as a planning commission, but I also think it would be fiscally remiss if we didn't consider these big projects for the county at fourteen million dollars over forty years, and as Jimmy said last week, being the number one taxpayer just during the construction year, so I think those are big things if we can all get our ducks in our own, so I don't know how to go about taking a step back, other than maybe moratorium on any new solar applications. Especially that sometime we have, do we not want to make a motion to do that?
I don't know if we'd do that or not.
Neither.
EM?
What are you asking? I wanna make sure I ask you the question that you're asking.
Our ordinances and our comp plan, since we don't have enough about solar, but since we seem to be moving fast pace, but, and just by this month, having three on the agenda, is there a way to take a pause to get our ordinances up to snuff before we keep accepting more applications?
Look out, it's a gun about addressing the solar question of the railways, preferred way, we probably not have a preferred way, as you were citing Halifax, Halifax has adopted an ordinance that sets forth a lot of criteria that they want to apply, Chesapeake is another one that comes to mind, it's done roughly the same thing. The other way that we are managing it, and what y'all have done historically with these projects, is by the use of the special use permit. In other words, the conditions that may be found in Halifax's ordinance, saying these are the things we want to happen, where that's posited at now, you can put those as conditions in the special use permit that you choose to grant, if you choose to grant it to, to the people who apply for the, the processes that are involved. It doesn't necessarily require a certain supervisory of the planning commission or board, you can run parallel tracks, we've acknowledged in some discussions, and we probably have, there are some things that need to be adjusted in terms of application, there needs to be some discussion really whether you want to adopt the ordinance approach, or whether you want to, can you control, control it more by special use permit than putting the conditions in the special use permit, so that really becomes a preference, but you have before you three applications currently, I, when I obvious to, I think I'm gonna show it right, what I asked you was Sam, was any new ones, that the three appro, the three before us now would be decided on, but we wish, we wouldn't entertain any others until we actually got one. If you want to do that, then I think you should, in coordination with the board, simply because the two, they'll work together, the two boards work together, express to the board what you want to happen, and the board asks either the formation of a study group, or ask them to task this group with whatever you want to evolve, in terms of revision of ordinances of what you might want to include, and I, I mean, that's certainly a, a way to pursue. It's a valid, very valid question, as to whether we want to incorporate, in other words, instead of having a discussion about what the conditions are, the conditions already spelled out, so whoever comes behind and says, well, we, we've got this ordinance, and here are the things that need to be in it, it's sort of like we've done in the Halifax ordinance. And actually, I had the Halifax ordinance when we started talking about, I had a, you know, lawyers are very good at borrowing, other people never mention, so look at some things and conditions and make that, and make sure, sort of check for the boxes, boxes on the special use. But you can proceed on these, and at the same time, again, figuring what changes you may want to make with the, the ordinances that we're currently having, and how you want to approve those, I think it's a very, very doable thing. While we're making our changes, do we have to, if, if another application comes in front of us, we have to, we can, we'll have to work on that? We got three now, we have to decide on that, what we're talking about, but in say, of thirty days from now, we haven't finished our changes, or whatever we want to do for, for our zoning ordinance, or for this whole solar farm.
our zoning ordinance, for this whole project.
Or do you have to take any more applications? You can't stop people from making applications on all of them.
Okay.
That would create some difficulty for you. Now, how quickly you act on it gets to be another question.
Okay, I understand. So getting back to her motion, is that something we can vote on or not?
What is the motion?
And if we vote on it, what meaning does it have?
Motion is what?
I don't know if that would be possible now, maybe the position of getting us to not accept any new ones until we had some sort of new ordinance or third agents special use permit, that if we can't stop taking applications legally.
I, I guess what I would ask you to do is not to act on that motion tonight, you have a little chance to look at it a little bit more carefully in terms of the moratorium of that, and y'all will come back, you have a meeting, or now, three weeks, four weeks, a few more in the future, should we consider those? I don't think you're gonna catch any applications of any consequence. You may guess so after that, you're not, not right away, but I don't wanna sit here and give you bad advice, you said that you can't, can't. And are we having ready thoughts, I wonder if it would be more for him? I think that's a very complicated question, and I have some reluctance. Just a time to really look at it, okay?
So you withdraw it?
Thank you.
Ah.
Oh, yeah, well, it wasn't an official motion.
Okay.
Discussion.
It's withdrawn. You have any other thoughts?
That'll do for now.
Does anybody else have any thoughts on that subject?
I'm in agreement with that, so I think we need to, that would give us time, and if we have to, after running as a dual plan, yes, I do, for any new applications, gives us chances to decide on the full volume, since Nikki has given us here, size and some benefits, so we can make a decision, we know, and then when something comes in front of us, we've already got the basic structure we wanted to look on. Right now, we don't have it.
So we've got to just reach out and look at what we've got, and say, how did we screw up there?
Right.
I mean, that's, that's what we got to look at.
Right. Well, it's, how do we improve, you know?
Yeah. And the only thing that I really see that's a problem with me is the lack of a buffer. Lack of a legitimate buffer. Now, if you went a little bit farther down 60, and looked to the right, that one's not anywhere near as bad as the one on the left. And if you turn right there on, was it Payne Creek Road, the one down there is even better than the one on 60, so, you know, I think we're heading in the right direction, but all we can do is look at what we've done and say, hey, what could we have done better?
Is there only the buffer that concerns? I'm the movie, and I saw.
Well, no, no, that's not the intent. I, I don't know if it's just the buffers. That's what I'm asking y'all, I mean, that, when I look, that's what I see.
And I agree.
But what else is in there that shouldn't have been? I mean, obviously, some of those are way too close to those houses along 60, I'll grant you that, but once again, it was our first one.
That's right.
And we had no track, nothing to go on. So, you know, mistakes we've made, we'll try not to remake in the future. But as far as, you know, how can they get any more panels in there? I don't know, don't look at me like I don't wanna fit anywhere in there. And they all seem to be working, I mean, they moved, they tracked the sun, so nothing's hitting each other, so spacing must be adequate. Is this a time to ask any more questions?
Sure, sure.
I'd like to ask one about decommissioning. How many have you decommissioned since you've been doing this? I've got a little problem, I don't understand, how do you decommission? And I know it's in all of these pages, it's hard to see, but.
Sure.
How do you go about doing that?
So, decommissioning a solar project is pretty straightforward, but we address it from the onset. Before the, before construction, the project starts, what we'll do is, we'll create what's called a decommissioning and rehabilitation plan, and we'll provide that to the county. And so, the county will do that, and before we start construction, we'll make sure that we're on the same page and in agreeance with the decommissioning and rehabilitation plan. And then the cost to decommission the project is estimated by a third party as a year in per, and then the gross value of that cost is sort of secured through a form of surety and in place with a third party, and so the county has that money, except it would be a bond, where if we were ever to go bankrupt or leave the county and stop returning your calls, the, the project, you know, is no longer operational, the county would have the money reserved through a bond, that they could use that money to fully decommission the project. And so, there's financial security that would be set up for that, but that's an extremely unlikely scenario. More than likely, the scenario would be that the project would operate for 40 years, and then once the useful life of the project is, is over, we would initiate the decommissioning and rehabilitation process, and, and it would, the entire project would be deconstructed, the panels would be removed from the racking system, the electrical wires would be disconnected, the steel racking would be removed from the piles holding it up, the piles would be pulled out of the ground, we would pull everything out of the ground that's 36 inches below the soil. We would even remove all of the access roads if Warehousing wanted us to do that. We would remove everything, except for the AEP substation, that would likely remain because it would be owned by AEP, and it's a, it's a benefit to the citizens to have, have that substation remain there. So, all of the infrastructure that was placed there would be removed. If Warehousing would like, we could leave the access roads, but then from that point on, we would be gone, and it would be up to the landowner, the warehouser at the time, or another landowner, to use that land for another, another land use, whether it's commercial pine, or corn, or any, anything else like that, that, you know, would be available to reuse it for something else. So this is, this is a short-term sort of land use that's being proposed, and then it would be completely removed, and still have that land for years.
Okay, honest to say, have you decommissioned any that you know?
Yeah. No, so we, our company was formed in 2009, so we're about 11 years old, and our company has, has never decommissioned a, a solar project, because their operational lifespan is much greater than the age of our company. Now, with that being said, there are solar projects and wind projects, but solar projects that have been decommissioned, and there are also case studies that have reviewed that decommissioning process, to understand the costs of it, and the timing, and things like that. You know, that, that information is, is available, these projects are decommissioned, so, you know, while we haven't specifically done it, there are construction and engineering firms that are, have done it, and are capable of doing it, and then, you know, there's a, there's a home for all of the materials when, when it comes time to do that, the solar panels are either reused, recycled, the raw materials and aggregates taken to various owners and salvaged and scrapped, there's value in that, in that material. It's all highly valued materials, steel, and copper, and glass, aluminum, and things like that, that there's an aftermarket.
But they do use, you know, just a certain amount of toxic waste, and I understand on some panels, some type of panels, but I just wonder, you know, what do you do with that toxic waste? I mean, we wouldn't wanna dump it in Buckingham County, that's all I'm just thinking, what, you know, that's a, you take something as large as you have, I know it's 40 years down the road, but what's gonna happen to that? And you were explaining that you would dismantle it and use, recycle and everything, but we're just concerned about toxic waste and things being dumped back into the soil.
Sure, so, there are decommissioning groups that, they can recycle these, they, they pulled aluminum off, the glass off, First Solar is one of them, they're US-based manufacturers. To your point about chemicals, you know, this, it's a solar panel, it's the same thing we see on, on homes, this, this technology isn't new, it's been around for 40, 50 years. You know, it's not, it's not, you know, it's a toxic waste, it's not uranium or anything like that that's, that's dangerous, it's really, there's just chemicals, solid-state chemicals, there's no liquid. It's, it's mainly, the number of materials, mainly glass wrapped in aluminum, and then it has a silicon membrane in the center, and the top layer is, is negatively charged, the bottom layer is positively charged. And it harvests a photon from the sun, and then it basically, that will transfer through the silicon, and then that creates not only electron, like an electron that's positively charged, but it gives a current. And so, that transfer through the silicone will then allow us to transfer through the collection and then up into the substation. So, I can give you a breakdown of what's in the panels, I can even try to get my hands on a panel to show it to you, just so you can look at it, but there's, there's no toxic chemicals in the, in the, in the panels, and I can, I can send you some literature that goes, that goes into that, and then you can review it for yourself.
The substation you built, and that's, that's specific for this site, I wanna correct?
That's correct.
Is there any capacity for someone else to work on it in the future? If, if you chose to?
Based on our analysis, we would be, we would be using up the remaining capacity right there on that line. It is, it is possible, down the road, as transmission is upgraded across the Commonwealth, every, every time you make an upgrade to something, it, it may open up additional capacity, and so I can't speak to the future capacity, and 50 years from now, we could, we could live in a very different state, and a lot of different upgrades could be, could be made, and, and there may be areas of open capacity in the Commonwealth that haven't been taken up yet. But we would be responsible for building the substation, we would be responsible for the cost associated with that, and so, we're, we're doing that, we're gonna be the ones responsible for that, and so, more than likely, it wouldn't be used for another, another solar project down the road. If, if it was used for another solar project down the road, they would have to do a shared facilities agreement, which gets really complicated, so more than likely, the answer's, answer's that one.
Okay. The, the reason I asked that, up to the east, was some timberland, I don't know if it's still a timber management group or not, it was Bear Island track, just to the east, and actually, George, and I'm just questioning for that, your answer.
For solar, what are the benefits or drawbacks compared to local ordinance or special use permit?
Well, I was sitting here thinking about your question, I was, when you got to a point, I was gonna say to you, that actually, not to you, to the whole group, that, that it will be very helpful to whoever's gonna create what you want in that new ordinance, to listen to the discussion and the conditions that you place on these solar forms that are currently in front of you, because I'm assuming you, we all worked pretty hard to get those conditions right, and so you're almost enlisting whatever these types of conditions are, and just dropping them over into your ordinance. There is some advantage to the ordinance, that you don't have to have the detailed discussion every time you get a project before you, it narrows the discussion to make it a little bit more narrow, in terms of the points you need to consider. And I'm sitting here thinking, how are we gonna vote this, and I don't know whether you feel any obligation to make sure the board's okay with it, because they're the ultimate, they're the ones that have to raise their hand, and there have been some ideas that have originated that didn't make it across the finish line, so I don't know whether you wanna do that part, but it's not hard, oh, I'm sure it's not hard. It, it is, it is, as we listen to the discussion, and you put these conditions in place to create the framework, that you just begin to drop conditions in and make it part of the ordinance. I mean, if you, so, the Pitzel, I mean, the Halifax deal, I mean, you're basically seeing conditions.
And the ordinance would apply to all of our current zoning, as opposed to special use permit in A1 or M1?
You would have to make a choice, do you want to fill up a special use permit, the compiles of those terms, it still gives you some ability to say we want another sweep right here, I mean, that really gets to be up to the planning commission and board, board in terms of what ordinance, but there are some jurisdictions that have given it as a model of right, in other words, you would not be having a discussion about whether this solar form might be in some places, maybe with this size you might, but, I mean, there are some places they've been built according to what I would say, don't come talk to us. I'm not sure if we're ready to go there.
Would you have to have specific dimensions, size of what are forms at that point?
In terms of what? In terms of size?
I'll, I'll watch, I can just take it off for a minute.
The, going back to the Halifax, the Halifax situation categorizes according to size of the application, the small applications and larger applications. Play off the notion too, of prime farm land, and there's some definitions of prime farm land, if you have certain percentages, they get mixed. Chesapeake follows somewhat that same pattern, large and small solar farms, so, again, the tough part for us, we hear the discussion, we've been out and operated, so we really don't know what details and what items you want us to emphasize if we create that type of ordinance, so we're gonna need, you know, we're gonna need some guidance on that, and it would not take too long to put together a draft, or somebody to look at and say, hey, no, this is what we want, the same questions you're asking the chairman referred to, you wanna get it right. You're gonna look at the ordinance, and you're gonna say, well, let's see, I'll coach you if I'm, get quickly to it.
For 11, is that the one you're looking for?
No, I was looking, I've got the. I think I closed it, but anyway, if you look at the conditions, they, they talk about setbacks, they talk about if you're, you're joining land on, on the side, you have a certain setback, if you're in your house, you have a different setback, and in that setback, you gotta have a certain amount of buffer, I think they talk about 15 feet of, of that.
Right.
So the questions you're asking, and the answers you're trying to find, will be what we like to drop into the solar ordinance once you create that. And there are some that take a different approach from Halifax, Chesapeake has, not quite that large.
I don't think we have such a characteristic.
So, I mean, we could, again, those decisions of what you want in it are gonna be the same types of discussions you're having about these conditions. are gonna be the same types of discussions you're having about these conditions.
And you're reading of the Halifax ordinance, that they put a, for small solar forms, did they happen to put a economic requirement or threshold, I guess is a better way to describe it, that they had to generate a certain amount for the can before it was justified allowing?
No, they talk about, I've got a, in a large-scale solar energy facilities, they talk about those and small-scale solar energy facilities. And the solar, small-scale are project area of one acre or less and has a relative capacity of two hundred kilowatts or less. And it's mounted on or over a building, parking lot of a previously disturbed area utilizing energy PDOL. So, and the large ones, renewable energy project that either generates electricity from sunlight consisting of one or more PD systems and other permitting structures and facilities within the boundaries of the site utilizes sunlight as the energy source to heat and cool buildings, heat or cool water or produce mechanical power by means of any combination of collecting, transferring. And then a project that area equals to less than one acre has a rate of capacity equal to less than two hundred kilo... two hundred kilowatts. Uh, let's see, I'm sorry, I went to the wrong place. Excludes those. And so anything without excluding, we will always sign. No, they don't cover any economic question. But really, sort of create by putting the conditions of what they have to do, you almost stop them.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that this is a course action. We've talked so far a lot about the Riverstone property, and Rikers Sub is such a large project. But we do have these other two that we have to address. They're smaller, the communities, so far. But it might do us some good to talk a few minutes about that and those, and see if we... And we gotta make a decision, either move these on the public hearing or define. But we don't have to make a decision like we do if we have another work session set up, if we choose to go that direction. I know both sites and the NCT of the one at the school, that's gonna be outside. Between the vegetation that they've got and where they're just moving the power off the road, you're not gonna see that. The one over on gravel hill road, I've worked on that at a fair date, it's a course property. But it's off the road over a hundred feet. And we could require us passive field, we could require some buffer to be put up there right at the facility, or within the first twenty-five feet outside the perimeter. But you're not gonna see it from any other direction other than gravel hill road.
I thought when we looked at the pictures, we never got a package on the two smaller ones, did we? They were all down on the computer, weren't they?
They're all on the computer.
Okay, I thought when I looked at the one over by the schools, that the panels were actually fronted around twenty, more so than being behind the school.
Maybe, I thought it was...
Does anybody else recall?
It was in the high street, what was the building, the straight street, if I recall. If I read it correctly, people went in behind, it was back on that bridge behind the straight street. So you not only had to planify that they have on the property, you had all of the timber. And that's it. I don't know which page that would be in the package, though. We could... Nick, do you know which, where that map would be?
It's in the...
Page?
I don't know which page it is. I think it's full of information here in the site.
So I recall it was on twenty. I mean, I might have looked at it wrong.
It is located behind the straight street building.
Yeah, the entrance is next on the twenty. But if I remember correctly, it was situated where we went in, and then it was behind the straight street building. Laid between their property and the creek buffer, that was to the east.
Well, they actually have a fifty-foot buffer as well.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean...
Yeah, I do have to distribute it.
Because it's a smaller one, I'm sorry, you know?
And if I read the map correctly, they already, they've got that more.
Well, that's fine, they've not affected that.
If you'd like to look at the mapping and just say so.
And those two small projects, did we get clarification on who their buyer would be? Those are called community solar gardens. Are they, are these the first applications we've had of that nature without a definitive?
I don't know if it is.
And they don't indicate, I mean, they will be generating power to the grid. Intentions surrounding solar gardens would, and I do not have IPS, Evan Carlson and Scott Aronson on tonight, they'd be able to speak a bit more to the subscribers that are needed to that community solar garden and those type things, but that power will be generated to the grid.
That's what I had read, that it was a subscription base.
I don't think that they mentioned in their application if they were, if they had received final approval for their project, or if they would be able, if and when, root for a building permit.
This is just another reason why we need a package from PayPal. Well, while she's looking for that, why don't we all turn to page eleven, or the, what do you call, the conditions? And let's look at conditions eleven and twelve. They're the ones basically that are talking about buffers and so forth. Yeah, I'm in the Riverstone, yeah. It's in the attachments, it's in the first few pages of attachments, front of that, Johnny. See where it says attachments?
What page? Oh, perfect.
First couple pages of the attachments is where it is.
Page number?
Yeah, twenty-three. It started on page twenty-three. Okay. Now, conditions eleven and twelve supposedly address buffers prior to us talking. So keeping in mind what we've talked about tonight, let's just look at it and see if it fits. Okay, where it starts about there, this requirement may be reduced or waived for the life of the solar energy facility, if agreed to in writing. I don't think we need that. Y'all?
I'm assuming your concern there is that this plant owner that has gone and says fine, in their case, they cut the timber? And he sold the property five years later, and the next plant owner said, what in the world happened?
Right.
I can see that being the issue.
Yeah.
So what you're saying is this is problematic.
What I'm saying is, I don't think this thing said what we want it to say. And it talks about... It's getting confusing to me trying to keep up with who owns it, when, where, and why. You know, I don't think we need to go into all that. I think we need to say, there should be a fifty-foot buffer around this project, and it must be to the point where you cannot see through it. Now, how do you achieve that? You know, we can leave it up to them, or we can dictate how, I guess. Something we need to think about between now and the next meeting. And then when we jump down to the next with number twelve, I don't know. We gotta do a lot of work on that one, too. We've already said it can go eighty feet of native timber, up fifteen. And we can talk about planting two rows of pines on fifteen-foot centers. You're gonna see through them, so that's, you know, that's not even close to what we want. You know, I think you've gotta look at it like each square is eight by eight. Is that what you said, Johnny, or was it eight by ten?
Five hundred forty-four trees a acre is eight by ten.
Eight by ten, so it's an eighty-square-foot area. Well, fifteen foot on centers would be, you'd have two of them per that block, if I'm...
Fifteen foot center would probably be about two hundred and fifty trees to that. So four hundred fifty-five, five hundred forty-four trees. I've asked, he's gonna get the, try to get hopeless warehouses to plant, not on their civil culture plan. They have the plantings date and the...
Right.
How many trees per acre a plant. And that'll help you a lot, you can see. But if you got over five hundred trees to acre planted out there, it's gonna be fit. I can assure you of that, because that's what it does, it closes in. They plant enough space apart that as they grow up and push out, they close in, and that's when it forces them to grow up.
Well, that's right. And then all the branches down low fall, that you see right there.
That's true, but it takes a while to do.
Well, we're talking about a forty-year project.
And there, if I might, Mr. Chairman, going back to the Pennsylvania deal, think of it in two ways. Think of a setback. You know, setback is how close they can get to either the road or adjoining property or another landowner or another builder of that type. Think of that setback as a certain number. Then think of, and the way they do it, they call a vegetative buffer, in other words. Because if you get a vegetative buffer of fifteen feet and it's ten feet high...
That's funny.
You ain't gonna see through it. So, you know, while the trees may have some advantage, but they are the point. You said they may get to a certain point and you see through the other part of it. But if you talk about the setback, and then talk about that vegetative buffer, and I don't think you need fifty feet of vegetative buffer to prevent people from seeing through it. And I think they have proposed fifteen feet. The notion being, if first five feet stop people from seeing through it, then all you're doing is just being redundant to keep adding to it. So, you know, you can control whether you can see. If you put a fifteen-foot vegetative buffer ten, twelve feet high here, and you stood on that side, I don't know if you could see through it, whether it was fifteen feet or twenty-five feet. So think about it, and I would suggest to think about it two ways. One would be the setback, make sure you don't have things constructed too close. And then think about the vegetative buffer, how thick you're going to want that so that you don't see through it.
All I know is if people see through it, they're gonna get just as mad as I get every time I come up Route sixty and look to my right, but at any rate.
And I think there are ways to control that. They, I think, you know, you can make conditions, and they've always started that, that you can control whether you see through or not. And it may not be day one, but within a certain number of years, or it would have to be a certain height to, which you couldn't see through. And maybe we have to process and make sure that stays.
Right, I think that's an important thing that might be missing from here, is the maintenance of these over the life of the project, making sure that during disease or damage, that these things are replanted.
That was a spruce.
I noticed they put that in here.
Well, when I was talking to Warehouser today, one of the requests they had was that we don't demand certain types of trees. And the reason they say that, some of them don't go good with pines. I don't know why, for what, you know more about that than me, Johnny. You wanna speak to that for a second? We don't need a lecture, just a verification.
It's true, some pine stands say, you know, that's why you don't see the certain trees down there. So that's compatible, I guess is the best way to put it. And you get some trees that are, and I tell you too, when you start planting, focus not native, or it's, and you're very prone to have lots of tree. Because it's planted off-site, and any tree that's not in its native range, there's something similar to it. It usually doesn't live as long, or doesn't grow as fast, or grow as wet. So you gotta really be careful of some of these stuff. I saw one, it was a solar farm in La Vida, and they had the mica buffer. It was about forty feet trees, ten feet tall, ninety-five percent underdise. I mean, it was great, made all that. So when the needles fall off, that won't go be in the screen.
Nick, is you?
On the part two, online, it's on page twenty-five of seven ninety-seven, on part two.
Presentation, as you guys already got it?
You wanted, y'all wanted to know more information on NCN?
Yeah, I just wanted to see that map.
That map.
Oh, sure.
It's about four hundred feet from the solid, twenty behind the straight street building, is that near?
Yeah, see, that's fine. Here's the panel right here. So they gotta sit away behind.
How far is that, why is that period there?
I think that's probably my...
Oh, okay. Is that from the school? What is buffering it there?
Right here comes there. I don't wish your hand.
But what buffer is it from the school?
Oh, this little area right here.
Is that planted?
Yeah.
Helped all of that?
Probably have now fifteen, eighteen, fifteen.
Thank you. I would think we need to take each one of these conditions and talk about them, and get them to where we agree with them, before we try to do anything else. And I don't think we got time at this point in time to do it tonight.
Well, we have ten, definitely, work session scheduled for tentacle for the...
Fourteen?
Fourteen.
September. But if we make a decision at that part of session, you do not have time to have a public hearing, such on the... You have to get it on.
Why was that on Tuesday night rather than Monday night?
The board of supervisors.
Oh, board of supervisors on Monday, okay.
You read it in formal motion? Do you need that in formal motion, Mr. Chairman?
I don't know, we're just going to recess again, aren't we?
This is a question, will we, will we be provided with links to the Halifax ordinance?
That's a question for Nikki.
And will you?
We can, we can provide a link to that, to the Halifax and, um, and.
Mr. Chairman, do you have to work at all conditions and say these are the conditions before you invite the public to comment on?
Yeah, that's what we're planning on doing.
I guess in other words, the process we've always used before is we have had applications, we've allowed the public to comment on it, and then y'all have, and we've had the thoughts and conditions as they need to be to, uh.
I don't think they needed massage, like these are going to be massage, I think there's a difference here.
Shouldn't we use these as the draft, or is there something that Mr. Wright would like to assist with, or we would like his assistance with between now and then?
Sorry, say that again?
The other commission members, if we wanted to work with what we have here, or if we would like your assistance in another draft between now and then?
Another draft of what?
The condition.
The condition, that's, those are not my, please understand, those are not my conditions.
I definitely think we need to work them over, and I don't think the meeting is the place to do it, so, to me, we only have another work session on the 14th.
We've got 27 conditions, you spend five minutes on each one, that's 135 minutes, so that's a little over two hours, and it's not talking about conditions that we only spend five minutes on each one.
Some of them won't require hardly any time, but others might require more than five minutes.
Is there any advantage of each, and I'm trying to think of a way to, to, we don't, reconvene, or we don't start totally, well, let's talk about this, is there any advantage for each of the commission members sending in their comments on the, each one of the conditions, and then, and we can assimilate what we've received from the Burridge?
Is that before the meeting or at the meeting?
Before.
Send it in before the meeting and before the bottom meeting, we would have, say, here, here the news.
May street land process, I might have to agree with that.
So, that's up to y'all.
We can do that.
At this time, do we think we need to have, to give a reasonable chance to assimilate those, you're going to meet on the 14th? Six is later days, so that probably, I'm assuming you're not going to be working on any intention.
Um, so not me, um, but tonight's Monday, the 30th, would you have a chance to get them to me by this Friday, the 3rd? Or maybe no later than Wednesday, September 8th?
So the consensus is emails to me, or some form of communication, a drop off to the office by Wednesday, September 8th, close business?
I do.
Do that.
A noble fact or a posterior thing, in regard to sending you a link, if we send you a link to, it would be the municipal code of Red County, would you prefer that we just cut out the appropriate section relating to solar and just send that to you as a PDF, would that be easier than having to?
Oh, please, okay.
So we are just reconvening, correct?
Have to look on reconvene. Can we do that, can we reconvene twice?
Sure, recess, we can do it on whatever that you want to, but the last time we can get ready to go to your next meeting, we're just adjourned to go to your next meeting. If there's anything else we'll send you, we'll see if you can get the PDF with the Halifax information, Chesapeake information, if I see something else, I just happened to have that one up, if I see something else, we'll copy and get that to you, and y'all will have comments to Nikki on each of the 27, uh, conditions, uh, the 8th, is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
And we do, every, we'll try to get that back to you, but I'll try to get you the links to the Burridge ordinance throughout.
Thank you.
If you want to have that in hand, if you think about it.
Mr. Chairman, let someone tell us, any more questions or discussions, or make a motion to the chairman.
After the chairman recess.
Recession, excuse me. Last second, all in fair, dedicated by raising your right hand, get down.